Basis, we also meet, have been meeting with our landlords and addressing our rental issues. Obviously, COVID has shut us down for a bit, but we haven't done since I've been on board, and we'll start this in the next quarter. We've been meeting with the DDA director and setting up a schedule so that for the first time and for the next year or so, we will meet quarterly with business owners so that we will have local business associations understanding where we're going, how we operate, why we want to operate, listen to their concerns about us, and so that we can give them a confidence that they can have the consistent predictability of what they think they should have versus what we know we had to give them, and we'll have that open communication. If you were here with us over the rental issues, you'll see the exact same thing with as many owners who want to come and talk about their business and how we're operating so that we can have a relationship with them directly then to us and an open communication. Finally, we've been also been working on the development team. It really doesn't belong to me, but we've been given the privilege of doing it. We've been working on redevelopment program for residential property that the city's owned, and some of it we have already agreed by council's approval to give back land that can't be built on, but we have many other pieces of acreage or footage that is rebuildable that we own and go on for a long time. And we've designed a building program. We've designed some optionals, extremes, and so the concept is how do we have a built-out city and yet we have open land that we can reproduce and put the property back into it and residents back into it. And so we've been in the process of writing this in thorough detail, and I was recently invited to write that report on a thousand-page doc, on a thousand-word document to be published in the MML division for the month of May. And so, under approval by the city manager, we will work on that article and we will put it in the municipal, the Michigan Municipal League's document for the month of May because they felt that it would be beneficial to the state to see some of the creative pushing and shoving of opening of how to rebuild a city that's already been built out where they have open spaces and creatively developed. So that's a short brief synopsis of all the things that are taking place, and we will be open for any questions from the council at this point.
John, I just had a question. We've had a couple situations with buildings in which people were coming in and whereas they were coming in and going from one use to another, but they were still acceptable uses as far as the zoning came in. That resulted in the assessment of having to go to the planning commission at $2,500 and some of that would be returned and such. My question for you is that whether that is absolutely necessary currently, or is there changes that could be made so that that could be on situations where it is a close change of use that you could have administrative approval for that? And what would be the process that we could do for that?
It would be an ordinance change to make that happen. We have some ability to make internal administration decisions when it doesn't need to go and that there's some outside issues, but to make a primary use, permitted use of a different use of a building. In other words, you can use four different things that a building can be used for, and they change from the first one to the fourth one. That makes it's a change of use, and therefore they need at least one visit to planning commission. And they've done it back when they redesigned this for the intent to make sure that the drawings were correct, that the records were complete, and that in the future, when somebody really does have a CFO, they have followed not only the building department for the structure of the building, but they've also followed the zoning rules and regulations for that neighborhood or that district which they are building in. But I do believe there's a room to change that, but it would have to take a modification by the ordinance, and we would have no problem rewriting that and submitting a recommendation to the council for their review and codification sometime here in the near future. That would be your wish.
Yes, I'd like to see that, just and then for discussion. But, all right, we'll open it up. Questions for either Mr. Myers or Mr. Jackson from council?
Through the chair.
Yep, go ahead.
Mr. Myers, when is a CFO? When does it expire?
When the change of ownership, management, or change of use of building, of business, all three of those would require that to be an expired CFO.
Okay, thank you. The other, the other point that I would just like to make is that I would still like to see on the building department's website, for homeowners especially, a list of what requires a permit.
Through the chair for me?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
So, John, for a certificate of occupancy for a rental, is that each time they move in and out, is it a yearly thing? How often do they have to update everything?
Okay, and I appreciate the questions. Great. The judge in the courts challenge me all the time on this. Semantics is everything to the legality. On a rental in our city, we do not require a CFO at all. We require a certificate of compliance, and that requires them to register on three, on the same cases. If the ownership of the property changes, then they do not get to grandfather and use the last requirement. So if they change ownership, means the house was sold, the property was sold, then they have to start all over with a certificate of compliance. That compliance in this city now lasts two, three years. It's complete. We've rebuilt the design because we got into a federal class action lawsuit that was extensive and lengthy by the skills of this department rewriting what it was and skill of the leadership. We won all of the cases on that, that federal class action lawsuit. So what it has done is it put our timeline that a registration starts at payment, and the registration now takes only 90 days from that payment to completion, otherwise you're outside of violation of your compliance. So instead of giving you six months per year, you have 90 days from the time that you registered, and registered doesn't count until you've paid.
Okay. So it's a three-year for landlords. If they have this thing until they don't change ownership, their compliance certificate is three years, correct?
Right. There are some, there are some violations in that. Example, if there's a fire, or there is a police or a complaint that someone has to be evicted because of an unsafe building. Once the building is registered unsafe, whether it's because of fire, or for sanitation, or something else, and the person is removed by the city for whatever those reasons are, that building, that department of that building cannot be occupied again until a complete CFC has been approved.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
Councilwoman, go ahead.
First of all, John, both Johns, on my meetings you last Tuesday, we talked about the manual. John Jackson, you told me that it was ready to go, that it was being emailed out. We did not, I did not receive it. Councilpeople didn't receive it. Now you're saying that you worked on it in March of 2020. The council wants this package so when a resident asks us a question, we can have a reference in this manual to give them an answer. So how much updating have you done since March of 2020, and why was I told it was done last Wednesday when it's not?
So let me clarify. It is done. It is done based on the direction that we got when we started the project, and so it's a complete draft.
Is it updated to what we've done?
Not at all. And because, and the reason for that is because things are changing so quickly, but the information that's in there, I think, is extremely valuable. That's why I made 10 copies of the document. It's too big to email. It just, it won't, it's too big to email. So I made 10 hard copies, then I'm going to drop off at the city for council members to pick up. And all the information in there is accurate and valid information, but we keep adding to it and we keep modifying it. As we talked about, it's a living document. So there's constantly going to be changes made to it. You know, the division of the building department into three different areas of focus, that's, that's not in there yet because that was made after the complete draft was done. So there's a lot of work that still needs to be done to it, and will continuously have to be done.
Okay. I just, I just think that we're all just looking for a point of reference to make it easier to communicate to our citizens, just to build better understandings and better relationships when people want to come in and buy a house, rent a house, or open a business. And it's kind of tough when we don't have updated concurrent information. So that's what you said we were going to get, and we didn't get it. So I just wanted to question, you know, is it, do you plan on having a more updated, usable, on point version of this anytime in the future?
Absolutely. But like I said, it will constantly be evolving. So as soon as we get it to you, there are going to be changes. And what I would strongly suggest, okay, is you have people, if someone comes to you as a council member and says, can you tell me what the zoning is on my property and what I can use it for? I would, I would strongly encourage you not to answer that question.
Of course not. That's not my job. That's a chiller's job.
Right. So, so it's the same, it's even, it's almost even more important with the building codes, that you not try to answer technical questions, you know, based on code references and things like that. And that's what this document is about. I think what might be more helpful is like the flyer that we have for how to open a business. You know, it's a one-page handout that talks about the steps that are required to open a business. And someone asked about if you're a homeowner, what needs a permit? So I think we can have one-page handouts about some of those procedural things, but I'm telling you, like, it's a 200-page document with a lot of technical things in there that...
Well, I don't think anybody in the council wants to be doing anything technical, but I think we all want to have better understanding, just for ourselves. I mean, I'm not going to go quote anything that John has the knowledge of, but I would also like to understand the process and the policies, and have something that you're giving to us so that we can actually not have to bug John every time a question comes up that we might be able to say, well, this is how you're going to have to go ahead and do this, and direct them.
Yeah, and again, I'm happy to get you the document to take a look at, but even since that last document that we did, there's been new ordinances adopted, new procedures put in place, and they, they happen at a pace that it's, you know, it's difficult to keep the document up to date, but, you know, we're working on it.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I constantly hear from businesses who have any problems when they come in, they are told the building department comes in. Bring it straight to the list, because they're told, I'm being told several times, if they come in and they get two different answers of what needs to be done, do you hand them something that tells them what needs to be done? Tell me, tell me how you go through them, because I'm, I'm hearing so many businesses complain about trying to open a business in Lincoln Park, and it's, it's, bring me through the numbers.
Two things, so I'll answer that for you real quick. I won't go through it tonight, but feel free to stop by. If you move in my office, it's in the bottom left corner of the building, and I'll be glad to walk through it. Number two, because of changing out the way our system now is built, we isolated, like it was in the old days, we put one person in charge of our businesses. And so as it begins to evolve, and by the way, that date hasn't, because of the COVID, has started on January 11th, we've organized and put one person in charge of our business districts. So if someone's calling, someone's asking, or someone's at the counter about our businesses, now they have one lady they deal with, or they deal with me as a primary. So the consistent development is between that lady and myself in creating a consistent performance of exactly what we have to do in line with the clerk's request, as well as ours, as well as the third party in our plan review. So we're getting to a very consistent predictable. I agree that we can put this online. There's some checklists that they can read like we did for the rental property, but as we get into the, we finished our first quarter and we're starting our second quarter with the team we have now, we'll have time to be able to address those questions in the future, based on the ordinance that we have in place at the moment.
So there is a checklist. Do you walk in your office, you hand me the checklist?
Of steps in which they have to follow, yes.
Okay.
It has, it really hasn't changed in, in probably 10 or 15 years, but it is now handled by one lady, and the checklist pretty much, it goes the same over and over and over and over and over, and as far as I know, it's being repeated the same.
And secondly, a lot of businesses are moving in, and I know of at least five buildings in this city who were bought, and then they find out, oh, I can't use it for what I'm zoning, zoned for, so the buildings are sitting empty and, or half tore apart. I want to know, can, can there be an ordinance, maybe you can answer me this, maybe the city manager can, can we put it into an ordinance that a real estate store has to tell the people what it's zoned for?
There's likely these people, that I've, I can, I can name four of those businesses right off the top of my head, and we try, what we've added to our list is a pre-application meeting, and a week before, both mayor, city manager, myself, had one of those additional pre-application meetings so that the client can explain in detail what they're dreaming about doing in the building, and then in that open conversation, we find out they've already bought the building, they already put a lease on it, and then we have to go, hmm, it doesn't belong in that district. I'm so sorry. And so that's where it gets problematic. They do it before they call to us, and what it discovered to me is some of these people aren't going through a realtor. They're doing it on their independent relationship with someone that they know is willing to offer them the building or sell it to them, and then they buy it and realize there's more to it than simply opening the store.
Right. We have to find a way to prevent that. It's happening too many times in our city.
And so part of the component plan that we're suggesting is that the building department openly has meetings with public business owners, so we can process that. Those who really want to follow the order of, we can rebuild a culture that they can know that there's a standard that we're going to set for them, and if they follow it, they'll get through it safely and protected against their own financial wearthalls.
And now I'm going to ask you about the question that every citizen has asked every member of the city council. Tell me about the plaza. Have we been given a list of what needs to be done, and can you show me that list of what needs to be done so that they can begin renting buildings?
I can show you the letter they have received numerous times of the guidelines of code, of commercial code documents, even as of recent, ladies and gentlemen. My responsibility is to go take a look and inspect what is not necessarily a permitted responsibility, but a repair that was required for commercial code standards, and I failed them because their workmanship, according to the 2015 IPMC code book that we regulate our exterior work from, in chapter one, verse 11, it fails because their workmanship is not to standards that we'd want in a professional commercial business district. And so you're answering, are they doing it? The answer is yes. Are they doing it to a professional standard that would beat workmanship standards? I've made those decisions, even in this last week, that several of those places are no. And so they're saying they're done. I'm saying the quality of workmanship does not meet the standard of what we're asking you to comply with. So the answer to those questions is I can give you the list that they've been given by us, by the city planner, by the DDA, through their attorneys. You can read that extensive list, but it doesn't necessarily mean they have met them at this point, even some of them that they have finished. They have, some of them they finished well, some of them they haven't finished well at all, and some they haven't even started.
Thank you.
John?
Yes, sir.
Yes, go ahead.
Why are you so nice to these people, John?
It depends on what you think is nice.
Well, I sat in the planning commission for numerous years, John. And I know we went and we gave them a list, and we took them by the hand, and we brought them in, and we explained, because I was there along with the commission, and then they would come back, and they wouldn't understand. They would never, they, so we would explain it to them again. And a lot of people come into the planning commission, and they don't even come there. They come there after they bought the property or moved in, or actually they're, they're open. And then they come in, they complain, and we go, well, do you do this to every city? Oh, no, no, but this is Lincoln Park. We can come in, and we don't have any problem with Lincoln Park because they don't enforce the rules. And then we tell them the rules, they get all bent out of shape, and then they go, well, can I cut a hog? Can I cut a deal? I don't want to do the rules. And then you very nicely, and we've had this discussion, John, before when I was on council, you give them all kinds of nice lead weight because you're a nice guy, and they continuously play the game, and play the game, and play the game, and eight months to a year, two years later, we're still playing with the same property. And I'm just saying, as I think you're too nice, is what I'm trying to tell you. And I think that we pay a lot of money to have Leah shepherd some of these people when they come in. I know someone personally, because I sat on there when we made a system for that. So when I see the stuff out on social media, or I would see somebody badmouthing the building department, be very careful what you're talking about. Some of us has been involved in the trenches. We've seen the contestants that have come in and asked to do things the wrong way, or been told to do it the right way, and refuse to do it the right way. So I guess what I'm trying to say, I think the city and my personal needs to be a little bit more meaner to straighten up some of these scallops. The ones that play by the rules, we don't worry, we don't have a problem with them. But the ones that don't, that's the problem we have. Those are the ones that make the city look bad. So I'm just giving you my two cents, John, because I think that you need to up it a little bit and, and give them the rules and help them, but hey, this is the rules, you know? I mean, it's as simple as that. But I got to abide by it, but as a residential owner, so I'm just making that a point because I've seen some stuff on social media lately that has made me very, very unhappy, and a lot of it's not warranted, and I think that's disgusting. And I can speak for some of the businesses that were going to come into the city before I got unelected, and they're still not in the city, and I'm wondering why, because they were given all the tools to do what they wanted to do. So I will leave it with the fact, go by the rules, play by the rules, and you won't have a problem. Thank you.
Thank you for your critique. If I can give you an encouragement.
Encouragement, but.
There are three businesses that bring significant value. There's one, there are two vacant lots that will no longer be vacant by the end of the year. There's an empty lot sitting on Southfield that will be turned into another Taco Bell, brand-new facility on Dix. And Emmons, by the end of the year, the goal will have a very large car wash available to the city as well. And Myers has finally made their decision and agreed to put a very large multimillion-dollar renovation to that property.
Good.
Through the chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Your honor, I just, I just wanted to make a quick comment because I know Councilman Higgins touched on, on, on businesses purchasing their, their properties in advance. And, and Mr. Jackson made a comment, well, he touched on twice the seven steps on how to open a business in Lincoln Park, which is right on the website in the, in the building department. And it, and the very first step is verify zoning. Before purchasing property or signing a lease, please check the zoning of the property to ensure the proposed use is permitted at the desired location. We can't put all the blame on the building department. These business owners have to do their research. So that's, that's all I have to say.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I'll make it brief.
Go ahead.
Spinning off on Councilman Higgins, the whole Blockbuster Building on Emmons, I know there's some litigation and stuff. The biggest question I get from residents is how are the other businesses allowed to be open and not that particular one? Why is he being punished?
Because they haven't complied. There's three of them in the business that I will not grant a CFO because I'm, okay, I apologize for this phraseology. I'm going mean and brutal, but I won't open the door. We have a very small window of legality because of the way the building was purchased and how it was operating versus what our ordinance grants to do for requiring a complete site, a site plan review, and since we weren't, weren't we allowed to do one of those by our ordinance, we had to find another way to restrict them to continue to run businesses without complying with commercial code. So the action that we've taken some 16 months ago was to stop opening CFOs. People started their buildings, they said, oh, but we won't permit them. There's two others on the, on the south side of the, of the property that have already renovated their buildings. They are ready for us to open it. We've refused to grant them a CFO. And so while Mr. Kelsey, you've been away, they have hired a lawyer to do litigations with us to figure out why can we not be required to open the rest of their businesses and bring money back into the, into the city, because I've been holding them at bay until they demonstrated that they were going to comply with the exterior responsibilities of the building, and at this point, they haven't. Nor have they put a bond on their document to guarantee that if they did, could do it in a future preference, we would do it with their bond money. So those are the three pieces of why that and two other businesses in the buildings are not open, and they haven't been open for a lengthy period of time, because they have not complied with our city's request for renovation and safety protection and development of the exterior of that plaza.
What does he have to do then at the Blockbuster Building? What does he specifically have to do to his building to comply?
Nothing. The owner has to comply with the exterior uses of the whole property.
So it's the owner that, of the, of the complex?
The owner does not have all the dumpster enclosures built. The owner doesn't, the list is blank.
So, last question. That's fine. So why are the other businesses opening in that same area?
Because they already opened when they, this is too nice of a guy that, that Mr. Kelsey is explaining. We allowed them to open when they first started, and, and then we realized he wasn't going to honor his word to get compliance to the exterior use, and so we had to go to the next legal option we had, which was not allow anybody else to open. So they got open thinking that the company was going to grant our request of completing the exterior use, and so we granted two or three other businesses to open, and in doing so, we realized at that point, three years ago now, he hasn't complied with the exterior yet.
All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. Myers, how long has he owned the property on Fort Emmons?
Since 2017.
Has he at any time given you a drawing, a rendering of what he was planning to do with that, with the building?
He has never done that. In fact, the only architect that he's accepted and worked on has asked for dismissal and removal. What he did give us was a site plan of a previous document from a footprint, and they allowed that architect to draw lines and explain what he was going. He never gave us a rendering. He never gave us a elevation plan, and he never gave us dimensional details.
So as the, the new people that are coming in, they're requesting and doing, having to do the site plans and everything else, what we're just asking for from them is on a larger scale, and he hasn't complied in three years, and you're just forcing his hand at this point. Would that be accurate?
That is, that is correct, because our ordinance does not grant us to require a strip mall or a plaza that has existing businesses in it when you purchase to put another business in it by requiring them to have a site plan review, because they haven't changed business use. They just have multiple facilities, some open, some not. And so we didn't have the legal control to require a full site plan review going to planning commission because of the type of business it was and how many businesses were in it when he bought the building.
Okay. Anything else from Mr. Myers?
Yes, can I ask? So every business or coming into a business district, no matter what the district is, every business has to have a site plan?
No.
Explain who has to have one and who doesn't.
It's complicated, but let me give you a quick synopsis. One, if you are a three or four-building strip mall on Dix, and two businesses are all all open and you want to go into the third one, and the fourth one's still going to stay vacant, and you're going to add a like business that is allowed and permitted into that, you might have to get a plan review, but you will not have to go to planning commission because there's no site plan, because the building is already existing and operating as an entity of an entire parking and business. So we can't ask the owner or a new tenant to fill that. All we get to do is verify that there's a zoning approval, and then the building department takes control of the building to make sure it has a health and life safety inspection on the inside. There's one example that says I can't force, in our ordinance, that every business has to have a complete site plan review. Because it's a building that's combinationized.
Okay, I wasn't talking specifically about the plaza. I'm talking about all businesses as well.
I just picked a building up on Dix Highway that has four units in it, but two of them wants, one wants to move in. I can't force a site plan on the one who's moving into an existing small plaza of four building units.
Okay.
By our ordinance.
But any, if someone wants to move in, they have to have a site plan?
Especially if it's a change of use. Or it's a change.
Okay.
So let's just say it was an office and now it's going to be an assembly. That's a change of extreme use. In our ordinance, we still need at least one visit to site plan, to planning commission. It doesn't need two, and it doesn't need to go to commission, to council, but it needs to go to planning commission because it's a change of use that is permitted. It's not a change of use that is nonconforming.
Nonconforming?
They need to go twice to planning commission and once to council.
Okay, if a building's changing, changing renters but not changing the building itself, not changing walls, do they have to still do a site plan?
If they're changing only tenants but not changing owner and not changing the interior structure of the building, and it's a change of use that's permitted, they still need to go once to planning commission. If they're changing to a nonconforming use, they have to go twice, and they have to go to planning commission, and they have to go to council.
Okay.
That's according to our ordinance.
Right. That's all, Your Honor.
All righty. I think that, Mr. Myers, Mr. Jackson, thank you for your report. We're going to move on now to citizen communications. Hang loose just in case that there are some questions that the citizens come up with. James, if you are in control of the mute button, if you could free up any residents or people that would like to speak?
Anyone who likes to can now unmute themselves.
Okay, I think I gave time for people to find their mute button. We'll now move to oral reports of the mayor and council. Council President Salsito?
Good evening, everybody. Just, we had a good debate today, good conversations, and it's been a long night, so I will pass. Thank you very much.
Okay, sir, thank you. Councilman Higgins?
Yes, I'd just like to remind everybody, there's a poll on our website right now just been put up on how we're going to spend our hard money. And it's right on our website. Please, please take a few minutes to do the poll. And I also like to remind everyone, we're going to over tonight. I'm talking a lot about, we have positions in the DPS, we have police positions, and we have a lot of positions now open in the Parks and Recreation Department. Please, if you're looking for a job, we have them. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Higgins? Councilwoman Tobin?
Hi, everybody. It's been a long night, so I'll kind of keep it short. I, this past week, I visited the new Mexican restaurant, La Finta, Pina de Go, and the Mexican bakery that opened two weeks or so ago. You have to go try them. They're wonderful. People are great. The Pina de Go is just off the charts. I can't say enough about it. The Mexican restaurant, they got some food there that I really like. So go out and try the new businesses, please. This past week, we did our lawn for the first time. It matted it. And afterwards, DPS came by and swept my street. But they didn't come down once, they came down three times. So DPS, kudos to you. You did a great job. And just a forewarning, everybody get ready for that two and a half inches of snow we got coming. And wear your mask, stay safe, take care of your neighbors. That's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Ross?
Thank you, Your Honor. And I'll start with the nine job, I'm sorry, nine employment opportunities that are available with us. We have a full-time firefighter, a full-time mechanic, a full-time police officer, a part-time administrative clerk, a part-time animal care attendant, a part-time events coordinator, a part-time ice resurfacer operator, rink attendant, a part-time laborer, and a part-time recreation attendant. So if you or someone you know is looking for an employment opportunity in any one of those areas, please check out our website. And the historical commission would like to send a special thank you to all who placed an order for the personalized pavers. They actually received 22 orders. So thank you very much. The Lincoln Park History Book, this is still available for $20. Keep that, please keep that in mind if you have someone that you need to buy a birthday gift for or just for something special. And the historical commission is also continuing their bottle and can drive. So if you would like to donate your refundable bottles and cans, a commission member will be more than happy to come by and pick those up. So either email the museum at lp museum at gmail dot com or call 313-386-3137. And on behalf of the residents on the 1,500 blocks of Fort Park, I want them to know that I did reach out to GFL, and I was assured that all three of their services will be picked up this Friday and every Friday moving forward. But if that does not happen, please let me know. And then I want to thank Mr. Myers. Thank you so much for continuing to help us move Lincoln Park forward. There is, how do I hear this? I don't want to sacrifice any, any one of our ordinances or any code of safety just to make someone happy. Because the very people that we are trying to serve are the very people that would get hurt if we didn't follow and follow our ordinances and get compliance. So please, just, please keep that in mind, that life, health, and safety is priceless. And I know that we canceled the Cinco de Mayo, and I want to thank our DDA director and his assistant and Councilwoman Tobin for all the work that they put into that. But I know that it won't be in vain because I'm sure that we will still have it later on in the year. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Ben. Councilwoman Dupre?
Yes, I just wanted to talk briefly about the community garden that we're having, we have Blessed Hope this year. It's going to be groundbreaking. On our first and second, we're going to be tilling up the plots. And there's a Facebook page if anyone's interested in joining, you can add us as to join. And we did have applications for plots, and we do have a few plots left if anyone is interested. It's all volunteer. It doesn't have to cost you anything, and it's just good fun for me. I love to garden, so anybody that is interested is welcome. And I think that's good for the night. God bless.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Kelsey?
Thank you, Your Honor. One of those long nights that we used to have a while back. It's a little hard to get used to it. Two things. I noticed when I wasn't on council that you, as a council, did a city of Lincoln Park utility rate model back in October, and I haven't seen the resolution to that. I mean, it was done, we paid for it from Plant Moran, they came out with some nice figures, some not so nice figures. And I'm just wondering when we're going to get to the nitty gritty and get this resolved or take another look at it to decide what we're going to do after we paid for the survey? So that's just one issue I'd like to have answered sometime this week, see about when that's going to be back on so we can finish up that water issue we got. The other issue is that Mr. Parkinson, when he was on council, and myself, we're talking about the building department, and I've talked to James about this, about putting our and our employees in there. And if I remember correctly, the way the conversation went, Mike Higgins, Councilman Higgins said, well, why don't we just do it one at a time in six months and try to do it? And I don't know where that's at. I haven't seen that continue or falter or if we're even going to do it. But that was the last time that I heard, and Mr. Parkinson asked me to ask the question because obviously he is not on council, but I asked, so I'm asking the council, where are we at with that directive? We're going to start phasing one of our employees into the building department and do it within six months, and it's been past six months or close to six months. So those two issues I'd like to see some answers to. And the last thing is, is I'm sincere about the issue of the manpower for the DPS. That's got to happen. I mean, you can bet on it, if it doesn't happen, that thing is going to start to fold, and we're going to have all kinds of complaints. And that's not the way this city should move forward. And it's been a pleasant night and a long night, and I thank everybody for their time and effort. And Mr. Jackson, long time no see. Nice to see you. And John, as always, you haven't changed any. Good night. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Quickly, in the end, you may have seen or at the meeting, the patches that the police department put out for autism awareness. I learned from the Public Safety Commission meeting today that the police department raised $2,500 to go to the Mixer Institute for Autism Awareness. So excellent job at the police department. Also, I went into the department, and I was surprised to see Sergeant John Stearns at the desk. John was off for a long time with a very serious illness that I think he is not yet completely over with yet, but it was nice to see him back in uniform and back to work because he is truly an exceptional officer with the police department, and we continue to wish him well. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So am I. Abort.
All right. Court, call the roll, please.
Councilperson Salsito?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Dupre?
Yes.
Higgins? You're muted, Mike. Ross?
Yes.
Tobin?
You're muted, too.
Yes.
Any more comments?
Yes, I think I was muted, though.
No.
Have a good night, everyone.
Good night.